We've, the decision has been made to go with what you have right now. We've been working with your staff to try to make one last change to what you're doing. Highway seventeen, that left turn off of Highway seventeen has always been the main problem on Highway forty-one. Adding the next intersection to be able to make a left turn at both intersections is a good idea. The problem we have is though, when you make the left turn on the Porsche block one, you go from two lanes, whoo, two lanes to one lane. I talked with your staff and they're saying it'll work with this, the way it's set up now. But if somebody were to try to park along, which is the road I'm talking about, traffic will back up at that intersection. We are trying to make sure that it takes a long time before we right back here again with this problem. This little minor change will make a big improvement on solving this problem. The town of Montlez had planned on building this road long before you even started working on forty-one. They should be able to kick in some money if that's needed, just to make that four lanes all the way. Before this came about, the council of government was supposed to be allocating money for the making improvements to the intersection of Porsche block and Highway seventeen. I don't know if that money ever got allocated, but if it did, there should be money there. But those two situations with the town of Montlez and the council of government, there might be some money out there. I know we're, my understanding when I talk to staff saying money is tight, but this would be, this is a sacrifice that should be made in order to keep us from having to come back as long as possible with this forty-one situation again. Thank you.
Bill Young?
Bill Young, thirteen oh nine Tarmigan. The days following nine eleven were the most patriotic this country has seen in the past thirty years. Unfortunately, I can't say the same now and here. We should be seeing nine American-loving county council members vote in favor of taking the oath. Instead, council members state they will be the laughing stock of the state for being forced to do this. That's an embarrassing statement. This county council at first hid behind the county attorney, who also, as I might add, incorrectly stated, no other county library boards take this oath. And I'll get back to that in a moment. Now we're hiding behind the archives, who said they don't know where to file it. So again, the county council reversed course. Now back to the other county library boards who take the oath. And y'all said it don't. That's plain false. It's confirmed there are boards across this state that take the oath. For example, York County Library Board, all seven members pledged an oath to Michael Kendry, the York County Attorney. They knew where to file it. Their reverence of the oath to our constitution, when it's already a law and it was stated to you in the form of a letter from the State House and the State Senate, your reverence is heart-wrenching. Honestly, it's disappointed me so much that I'm considering a run for county council. And also to assist in the coalition against several of these members sitting here tonight. And if I do this, the Marine Corps taught me a lot of things, ladies and gentlemen. And one of those is how you win battles like Ramadi and Palooja. Street to street and house to house, that's how you win the community. Thank you for your time.
Alyssa Bertoluzzi, followed by Melanie Collins.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Bertoluzzi, seventy-four twenty-six Jenkins Hill Road, Edisto Island. I had prepared remarks, but they've been taken from me. I was told because I was talking about the oath, it was a conflict since I am also a library board trustee member. And there has been minutes and discussion about the oath that are in the minutes, but they're very vague. Charleston County Public Library does not record their meetings, so the details of discussions aren't available like they are when public watches this here meeting. So I'm not even sure what part of my remarks I can even say since I've been told that I would be called out of order if I talk about the oath. But as a library board member, I feel like I have a unique position to discuss it and also the fact that I had filed it with no problems back February twenty-eighth, with never having any word from the Secretary of State that it would be not accepted, dismissed, or returned. So I'm disappointed. I can't say what I cared to. A young lady that works for y'all went and made copies, so supposedly all of you will be getting a copy of what I actually prepared. Thank you.
Melanie Collins, followed by Reverend Nelson Rivers.
Good evening. I'm Melanie Collins, thirty-two sixty-eight Charlotte Avenue, two nine four two zero. I am a member of the Charleston County Public Library Board of Trustees. However, I am not speaking as a member of the Library Board of Trustees. I'm speaking as a tax-paying, property-owning citizen of Charleston County. First, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Sasse for expressing appreciation for and support of the Charleston County Libraries Board. Your words matter and we appreciate being seen for the work we do. Councilwoman Kibrowski, I must express my deep disappointment in how you have misrepresented a board you've barely engaged with. In your two years as liaison, you've only attended one meeting claiming a scheduled conflict. That excuse doesn't hold as your predecessor, Councilwoman Anna Johnson, requested and received a meeting change to ensure her attendance. The one time you did attend, it was not to listen or support, but contribute to a very contention, the very contention stirred by Mr. Horstman. Additionally, my words were taken out of context, but sadly, I'm learning that misrepresentation is a pattern. Let's be clear. This is about diversity of thought and how it is reflected in both the stacks of our library. The truth is, you aren't seeking to protect democracy. You're trying to remove those who think differently than you. I am and always have been an American. But unlike the ancestors you so proudly speak of, mine didn't have a choice to come here. Yet I served the board with pride and dedication. In nearly eight years, I've been committed to this community, the library system, and yes, to an America that must remain a place of diverse thought and shared respect, not division and control. Thank you.
Reverend Nelson Rivers, followed by Matt Mossberg.
Good afternoon, members of council. I'm the Reverend Nelson B. Rivers III, fifteen forty-four East Montague Avenue, North Charleston. I'm the pastor of the charity Missionary Baptist Church. I rise to speak out against the oath because the oath contains allegiance to the eighteen ninety-five South Carolina Constitution. Anyone who knows anything about our non-ilustrious history knows that in eighteen ninety-five, Ben Pitchfork Tillman, one of America's most notorious racist, was the author and the one who pushed through that constitution for very specific purposes. One, to take the vote from black men. Women, black or white, didn't have the vote in eighteen ninety-five in South Carolina. But black men were stripped of the right to vote by the eighteen ninety-five Constitution. Also was done to create the segregation that we had to overcome and fight with. Disenfranchised black folk went after us, giving Klan authority to come after us. The truth of the matter is, no black person should be compelled to take the oath to the eighteen ninety-five Constitution of South Carolina because it was diametrically opposed to the United States Constitution. And it would be like asking one of our Jewish brothers and friends to take an oath to Mein Kampf or to get anybody to take an oath to anything that's against their very existence. The eighteen ninety-five Constitution of South Carolina was designed to overturn the eighteen sixty-eight work that was done. It was designed to strip away the right to vote that was won through blood, sweat, and tears in the Civil War. And it was seventy years before black folk got the right to vote in South Carolina. It did not come from South Carolina's Constitution. It came from the nineteen sixty-five Civil Rights Act, the Voting Rights Act. Before that, the sixty-four Civil Rights Act, and after that, the nineteen sixty-eight Fair Housing Act. All of them were done over and against the South Carolina Constitution. So when you ask me to take an oath to the Constitution, first, I uphold my right as an American to not do it. I have the freedom to speak and the freedom not to speak, especially words that castigate my existence, deny my humanity, and treat me like less than a citizen of this country. So I understand why any African-American and any white person would not want to take the oath that implies allegiance to the eighteen ninety-five Constitution of South Carolina, which was racist to its core. Thank you.
Matt Mossberg, followed by John Grigsby.
Good evening, council members. I'm just here to remind y'all, there's a group in Charleston called Elbit out of South Carolina that is still actively trying to get this company that is complicit in war crimes out of our county. It's not a business that we should be engaged with as a community and it is also a source of blood money that is coming from our hard-earned tax dollars to kill innocent civilians in ongoing atrocity. A lot of what has to have been said has been said, but I'd just like to remind everyone here that in the last week, over four hundred confirmed children have been killed in this atrocity. And Elbit Systems is the leading provider of this sort of weaponry. Now, they also provide to other countries besides Israel. But when they sell those weapons to other countries, they market them as battle-tested. And they're battle-testing them on civilians, on children, on hospitals, on journalists, more journalists than in any other conflict in the last several decades. So just a friendly reminder. Thank you.
John Grigsby, followed by Filippo Ravaleco.
If you could, I'd appreciate it. My name is John Grigsby and I live at, I've lived on Door Road in Onda. I'm speaking to this matter of the oath as well as Elbit because they're tied together. Graham Horstman seems to be at the center of what I would call, as a Republican, a political stunt. He identifies himself on the Library Board website as a combat veteran. And I'd like to speak to that because another article I read in the newspaper recently said that this combat veteran spent time serving in the Israeli Defense Forces Counterterrorism Unit. He goes on in the article to say there are several members of our community, I don't, I could take a gander as to what that community is, here in Charleston who are in the IDF currently serving in Gaza where there's ongoing genocide in this current round of conflicts. He says, "My cousin from Charleston is currently serving in the IDF, blah, 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 defending Israel." So this gets to the matter of the oath, Mr. Horstman and the oath. So there's an oath of allegiance that matters a lot to me. When we all come here, we're Americans. We're not anything else. I'm five flavors of white guy and I could give a ding-dong about any of the countries that those people come from. I don't follow their news. I don't speak their language. I'm an American. I'm nothing but an American. That's the same it should be for all of you. The oath of allegiance, according to US Citizenship and Immigration Services says, "I hereby declare an oath that I absolutely and entirely renounce and obdurate all allegiance and fidelity to any foreign prince, potentate, state, or sovereignty." What I've added in this booklet for IDF soldiers is that they sign on to swearing and committing to maintain allegiance to the state of Israel, its laws and its authorities, to accept upon myself untraditionally. He's a foreigner. Why is he serving under our government?
Filippo Ravaleco.
Good evening, everyone. Filippo Ravaleco, five ten Light Book Drive. I'm with the South Carolina Environmental Project. We are asking you to deny or at least defer the vote on the proposed settlement with Grantham Homes. Your approval tonight would be pouring a lot of good new wine into old wineskins. And we know it doesn't do any good. There's new leadership and purpose on this council and in the community affected by this matter. There's a new preservation ordinance painstakingly negotiated for more than a year with the great contribution of this council. There's the revised comprehensive plan with the renewed commitment of the whole county to protect its unique cultural resources. It's remarkable that in the recommendation to settle, there's not even a mention of the pending appeal of the Planning Commission decision on the same matter. And I'm moving to the old wineskins now. The sue-to-settle authorization meal, getting developers what board and commission decision lawfully denied them, has to stop. No, it works like magic, but it's dark magic. You're turning good outcome for the community into good outcome for the same few usual suspects. Accepting or condoning bad and biased legal advice is not good government. The HPC, the Preservation Commission, did its job in November. Look at the video. There was a full, well-informed discussion. The developer didn't like the outcome. And so before Christmas, they filed a five-page, measly petition full of cut-and-paste, right, meritless, some even false statements. And by March, legal advises you to settle? Council members and councilmen in particular, it appears that your top paid employees need some training. And the Planning Commission too.
Thank you, sir.
With the old wineskin and not spill the good wine. Do not approve the settlement. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. That was the last public comment. At this time, we will have our prayer by Chaplain Roy Yule from the Coastal Crisis Chaplaincy and our pledge from Lieutenant Jacqueline Woodall, Charleston County Sheriff's Office, participating in the current cohort of emerging leaders.
Let's pray. Almighty God, I pray for this council meeting tonight to give each council member wisdom, guidance, at the delivery on the item before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight, for our benefit and for your glory.
Amen.
Amen. The Freedom of Information Act.
Yes, sir. In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Thank you very much. Item two.
Both for approval.
Second. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. The ayes have it. Items three.
Approval.
Probably moved and seconded. Resolution honoring Trinity Hall's twenty-twenty-five South Carolina High School League one-hundred-and-twenty-five-pound female wrestling state champion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. And the ayes have it. I believe Trinity is here.
A resolution of Charleston County Council honoring the accomplishments of Trinity Hall. Whereas from time to time, Charleston County Council has the privilege of recognizing individuals in the community who exemplify commitment, determination, dedication, and excellence. And whereas North Charleston High School wrestling star Trinity Hall has exhibited all of these characteristics throughout her years as a four-year letter-winning scholar athlete, competing in wrestling, volleyball, and softball. And whereas Trinity Hall is the daughter of Michael and Heather Hall and is coached by Coach Kendall Keel at North Charleston High School. Whereas on Saturday, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, at four fifty PM, North Charleston High School Trinity Zion Hall became the first female wrestling state champion in Charleston County School District history when she won the one-hundred-and-twenty-five SCHSL Female Division State Championship via a pin in the very first round. And whereas Trinity Hall holds a three-point-eight GPA and has participated in the Students in Action Program at North Charleston High School. And whereas, according to Coach Kendall Keel, Trinity is strong, she is resilient, and she knows what she wants. North Charleston High School Athletic Director Adrian says she is dependable, she is a leader, she is an example of what is wanted and needed as a Cougar athlete. And she is a role model for the youth and other female athletes who look up to her within Charleston County School District. Principal Darby says she is a trailblazer. Her accomplishments will go a long way to be remembered and she will one day become a member of the Hall of Fame at North Charleston High School. And whereas Trinity Hall was recently awarded an athletic scholarship to attend Newberry College and hopes to attend a four-year college and major either in biology or biochemistry to become a physician's assistant specializing in anesthesia. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Charleston County Council, in meeting duly assembled, is proud to congratulate Trinity Hall for her spectacular high school wrestling career and for bringing the honor of the state championship to Charleston County. Charleston County Council Reverend Dr. Colin Jerome Middleton, cheer, March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. This is impromptu, but I'm going to ask the Athletic Director, Coach Adrian, great to say a few words on behalf of Ms. Hall and Coach Keel and our athletic trainer.
Trinity has been the inspiration to a lot of the youth in our community. Like he said before, she is the first female wrestling state champion in Charleston County School District history that came with a lot of hard work and dedication. She's the type of young lady that shows up every day. She don't miss. And if she ever has to miss, she always makes her coaches know. And she's just not a student. She is a student athlete. I don't know if y'all saw her GPA, but it was very high. She is what we want in a Cougar athlete and we're thankful that her parent let her come to North Charleston and play for Coach Keel. We thank the athletic trainers, her coaches, we have another coach here with her, and administration for allowing us to be a part of her life.
Thank you.
Ms. Trinity.
Reverend Rivers.
Mr. Darby, who'll take you to lunch and pay for it? If he doesn't, you call me and let me know, okay?
Mr. Darby, we do have a repass in the back.
Thank you very much. Thanks for sharing that. Thank you.
Ms. Trudy, you can go in the back as well, too. She's from the famous Lucas sisters. She's a singer, serving her sisters and singing all your life. And they were my family, too, too. We love you. Have they went? No.
We're going back tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Chairman, as a point of order, I had hoped to bring up the consultation issue today from the Finance Committee, but I found out late last night, around four fifty-nine, that it wouldn't be on the agenda. Is it still possible to talk about the consultation issue? And what notice that we get of that as board members?
The clerk is saying that there is not a motion from the Finance Committee.
There was no recommendation from the Finance Committee, so it wouldn't move forward to County Council. And it would take unanimous consent to add it at this point.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I mean, I thought where we landed with this, and I understand wanting to address it as quickly as possible, and I don't know if next Thursday is, you know, too late, but I did, my understanding is that this would be something that, you know, is really a discussion that seems to be heading towards an admin policies-type issue dealing with, frankly, the procurement ordinance. So I mean, if, you know, I don't know, Mr. Kibrowski, if you would have amendments proposed by that time or if you would at least have some discussion ready at that time. But I mean, I'd be happy to put it, I'd second putting it for discussion now. I think it'd probably jolt things a little too much, though. So I think maybe if we could, you know, happy to put that on the, it's not my, it's not my, not my committee, but if we could get that on the admin policy committee, I think that's the appropriate forum.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
That wouldn't come before admin. That would have to go to finance because of dealing with funding. And so it would be no need for discussion in admin policy. It would have to come to full council. Mr. Kibrowski would need to have everything written up and sent to the council in time for review. And then it could be discussed whenever it's put on the Finance Committee. But you would have to propose whatever amendments and changes that you need and send to council members.
Was there a particular, Mr. Worms said that he was willing, maybe, to provide a second. So is there a particular item?
All have equal access to the consultants, I was asking. Is that, is that to wait till?
Mr. Kibrowski, I'd be happy to work with you on a motion that we could formulate for finance next week if that's amenable to you. I mean, I think, I don't know if I'll agree with you on everything, but I think there's some points with which I'd be willing to agree with you on and happy to work with you on parts we don't, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for that cooperation. Thank you, sir.
Very well. Thank you so much. The consent agenda for?
Both for approval, four A through E.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. Item five, Finance Committee Recommendations.
And I understand at five A, no, no, I'd move for approval for five A, five B. And I think there's discussion on five C. I think somebody, five A and B, move for approval.
And seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. The ayes have it. Five C, Grantham Homes LLC versus Charleston County.
Committee recommendations.
Second. Moved and seconded. All right, we'll take the discussion. Vice Chair Kibrowski.
I'd just like to say, this is in my district, so I have a special interest in this. And I asked the board, the council members to remember that we, in unincorporated areas, we are in the same position in helping or governing communities as municipalities are. And I, you know, worked in downtown Charleston for over forty years. And I witnessed how things are preserved in a special historical nature of south of Calhoun, south abroad, and how zealous, and that's only been preserved by concerted effort by the people that live there and the recognition of the historic nature and what's at stake. And I would urge the other council members to consider that what's at stake in Ten Mile and the historic settlement communities is just as worthy of protection, just as worthy of conserving way of life and the struggles of people for many generations. And we stand in the same relation to those communities as the city of Charleston, the historic preservation issues that they've had and commissions that preserve Charleston as it is. And if we don't do what we can to preserve it and consent to developers coming in, taking this piece away and that piece away, over time, there'll be nothing left. And again, as I frequently say, I've been through there thousands of times. And anybody that drives there can see very readily, when you get past Park West or Carolina Park or Dunes West, you run immediately into Ten Mile. And that is the line of next development. And also that we appoint all the members of the Historic Preservation Commission. Each one of us appointed one, so none of us had an unequal weight. And if we have these committees or commissions that we appoint, we ought to respect them. But every time we have something from the Planning Commission or the Historic Preservation Commission that goes against the interests of developers, we always overturn it reflectively. And I think that we should pause and respect the people who we appoint to these things and remember, what's at stake here? They've considered all this, the people. We owe it to them to not just give in. And there's, and again, we. And there's, and again, we are in the relationship to the people in the historic settlement communities, again, like the way municipalities are, the city of Charleston that preserved and protected what's unique about Charleston. And I said, this is just as worthy of protecting. And I understand that the basis of it, again, as I brought up, are intemperate remarks or things that some people disagreed with what some of the members of the commission said. But that is exactly when we were challenged on the, the sales tax referendum. The opponents who wanted to overturn it said that members on this panel here were, said that, well, some things, they had to tie things together to make people, if you want a green space, the only way you can get that was to vote for the roads in 526, and we argued that wasn't enough, that that should not be considered. But we're being asked today to do the exact opposite, to overturn this, because some members of the Historic Preservation Commission may or may not have said things that weren't germane. I don't know what those were, but we should be consistent on that. I would ask you to respect the integrity of the commissions that we appoint and not to overturn this, because if it's death by a thousand cunts, cuts, a developer gets in and puts three homes there, four homes there, and before you know it, it's irrevocably changed. How would the people of downtown Charleston have felt if, I'm sure that there's no great areas that they, if the people that lived there for generations and then developers came and tried to create subdivisions in downtown Charleston, how would we react to that? And I ask you that this is the same process going on, and if we keep on reversing, allowing that to happen five or 10 years down the road, it will be irrevocably changed and a part of our history will be erased. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Warman.
I just had a question, the, the, I think it was called an appeal of the Planning Commission's subdivision. I don't know if that's, not familiar with that being sort of how those procedures normally go, but I understand there's two procedures going on. One was referenced during the public comments, that, you know, we've got this appeal of the denial of the CHA, but it sounds like separately there's, it's called an appeal of the subdivision that was granted, that I understand these homes would be predicated on that subdivision going through. My, I guess first question is, am I misunderstanding? And second question is, like, what is the interaction, if any, between those two litigations? I'll say this, my concern is, I don't want to undermine this separate action. If, if they have some legitimate challenge to the subdivision, I want that to be able to play out without us undermining that. So are they, like, breaking ground once they get the CHA, or are they still subject to sorting out whatever that separate challenge to the subdivision is?
I am actually not abreast on where the subdivision challenge is. I am aware of it, but I'm not sure where it is in the process. They are two separate actions and would still both need to be fleshed out.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to, I don't know if we want to go into, well, it sounds like we wouldn't even be doing much in executive session anyways. I, I would be willing to put this off for, I don't know, at least a week to figure out what's going on with that. I guess, can I make a motion to table for until our next council meeting?
We would not want a table, right? Defer, right?
Move to defer until our next council meeting?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to defer this matter into the next council meeting. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers nay? All right. Thank you so much. Item six, boards and commissions.
Approval A through E.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers nay? Thank you so very much, the ayes.
Can we do six I through six F?
Do we have six I? Okay, let's, all right, move for approval on six I through, I mean, six F through I.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Oppusers nay? The ayes have it. Thank you so much, Mr. Boykin. Sir, thank you so much. Ms. Honeycutt?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to say thank you to those who participated in today's woodland shores and Maybank Highway groundbreaking. We are very excited to begin the 5,500 feet of sidewalk that'll be going in on woodland shores, as well as the pedestrian improvements and mid-block crossing that'll be going across Maybank Highway to make that area, area much safer. So thank you to our Public Works team who put that together this morning and has moved this project along. We look forward to getting many more done. Thanks.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. Mr. Darby, please pass along our congratulations to your wrestler. That's quite an impressive feat. Two, two outside agency things. Recently, I was fortunate enough to, to visit along with Councilmember Sass and Boykin, the Pet Helpers Facility, and what a wonderful partner we have got. I know, I think Ms. Honeycutt's been over there before. What a wonderful transparent partner we have signed on with, and I look forward to future visits with those folks. And Mrs. Honeycutt and I went to our, our first library board last week.
Museum.
Museum, I'm sorry, museum board. Museum board. And they were, they were thrilled to have us. They, they said nobody had been there for years, so they were, they were thrilled to have us visit and be a part of their discussion. They've got some cool things going on over there, too, so I would make sure, encourage you, those outside boards and commissions are on to attend those. They covet your presence and they covet your input. Thank you.
Much, Mr. Pryor?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Darby?
Yes, sir, and I'm not going to expound on it at this time, but if I could send out a call, because I know that most black men do take care of their children, but there are many of us who do not. It's time for black fathers to come home and do what we need to do, because if we were to do so, there'd be fewer killings among young people. Shot last weekend, fighting for his life. And the question came to me, if there was a black father in that house, there's a great possibility that wouldn't happen, because a real dad and a real father would not allow certain things in this home. And that's why it's so important for black fathers to do the right thing. I'm getting tired of, year after year, students across, particularly African-American kids. I know African-American females sing the verse, I know they do the best they can, but pardon the grammar, it ain't enough. It's not. And it's time for us as men, black men, to stand up, to be accounted for, and to take care of our children. Again, I know the majority of us do, but there's a great number of us who don't. God gets just sick and tired of it, and I'm going to expound it at another time, but I have to get all my facts together, but it bothers me when you got a 14, a 15-year-old boy home and he has a Glock in his room. But if a daddy was in the house, he said, no, that's not coming in here. This drug's not coming to my house. If a real father in the house, that 16-year-old daughter would not be on the street at 11:00, 12:00 o'clock at night, all this sexual promiscuity going on. It would not happen. So black men need to stand up, be a man. We can't blame everything on white folk. I get tired of that, blaming white people for our own mistakes. Yes, I'm gonna say. Let's be men and get our house in order. But again, I'm not going to expound today, but the time is going to come, I'll have my facts together.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Sass?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing for me tonight.
All right, Vice Chair Kowalski?
Well, first, I want to thank the council for deferring the decision on the lawsuits affecting the Ten Mile community. I thought to give more time to look into that and help protect something that was unique and special. I'd like to say that the, I was at a very positive event today, that we reopened the library in Sullivan's Island, and thank everybody for making that happen. That was a wonderful event for generations. My wife taught at Sullivan's Island Elementary School, my daughters went there, and my six grandchildren go to that library all the time. That was a very special event, and we thank you for making that possible, and future generations can enjoy that. And my father-in-law was part of Civilian Conservation Corps that was stationed there in the 30s, so it had a very special meaning for us there. And because I was called out today several times, people have a right to free speech, but I'll never be apologized or intimidated for being Jewish. I noticed that the two speakers called out the two Jews by name, Graham Horsman and myself. And it's, I just asked to think of, when I think again, I'm not as eloquent as Mr. Darby, but I said that the, that people like that, when I hear that, I'm reminded, as I said before, of how the country has changed in response to things like that. Well, my own mother had the funeral, the people that came to pay respects because of people like that. You know, we had, my family members had to go through armed guards with people with, you know, flak jackets, and I have to be walked out at night often because of that with the same. And I'm not going to be intimidated by hate mongers or those. I like that, and I feel that I'll continue to call that out. And, but I'd also want to talk about briefly that we voted again the library oath, and I liked the thought that the editorial from the Post and Courier said a lot of good things that I like to say, because I, we turned an informational item last week into an action item. And I like to say, I don't, you know, I was at the other meeting, but I don't think anybody is a bad person for not doing something they didn't know they had to do before, so I don't remember ever accusing anybody of that. There were comments about two people who didn't want to take it, but as the Post and Courier said, in a society based on the rule of law, we have to obey the laws and constitutional requirements, where, you know, public officials who refuse to do that, it says they're not fit to be public officials. Instead, if you're going to go against the Attorney General's opinion, you need to explain where the legal flaws in that opinion are, and they couldn't find any. And most importantly, they said, but once you learn you haven't been obeying the Constitution, your duty is to start. And that's all that we were trying to do. And because it was brought up about what it was, I just want to read it, because it was, said it was too arduous to, to do or at this store, or where to send it. And this is, it says, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected or appointed, and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States, so help me God. And I confirm, and the Attorney General said in no uncertain terms, members of the Charleston County Public Library Board of Trustees are officers within the meaning of Article Six, Section Four of the South Carolina Constitution. They are therefore required to take the oath of office prescribed in Article Six, Section Five of the South Carolina Constitution. And again, the people that serve on that are not bad people for not having done it before, but I do feel that based on a society, as the newspaper said, which I agree, based on the rule of law, once you learn you have to do something, you do it. And people want us to affirm the civic nature of what it is to be an American. We, before the meeting, we do a prayer, we do the Pledge of Allegiance. This is in the same thing. People deserve that, to have our public officials do that, and I think every citizen should be proud to do that, and it should be done. And I regret that we, although I don't think anybody up here, as Mr. Moody said, nobody up here doesn't believe in the oath, that's true. And I never suggested that anybody sitting here doesn't believe in it and would be willing to take it, but it is clear that by what we did last Thursday by turning an information item into an action item before that night, we had a requirement for all of our boards and commissions to take the oath, and after that night, that no longer applies, so they no longer have to do it, so we took it away. And I just want to say for one, I regret that, and I wish we hadn't done it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Warman?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Welcome back, Mr. Administrator. Anything from you?
No, sir.
All right, just a couple of things as a way of reminder, just reminding all of you that we're still working with the State Infrastructure Board and DOT. Mentioned to you all that the Joint Bond Review Committee is set to meet tomorrow. We thought that maybe there was some opportunities for us there, but that, we're not on that agenda at all, and so to be continued, and just wanted to let you all know where that is. Once we get more information from the State Infrastructure Bank, I will let you know, and then we'll figure out where to go from there. Also wanted to remind you, or at least invite everyone, if you have not yet received an invitation, that we have a Housing Trust Fund signing event. So finally, we're moving that can down the road. We have a Housing Trust Fund document, you know, so to speak, and that will be at 3627 Maybank Highway, Johns Island, at 11 o'clock AM on Thursday, March 27th, for those who are available and able to come. The clerk will send a reminder to all of us. And then lastly, we have these appraisals, right? The four appraisals that need to be completed by April 1st, those have been emailed to you. Certainly, we pray that you are able to access the link. If you're having problems, please let me know. It can be printed out. If you're printing out an appraisal for our clerk, please give it to Ms. Worster, she will receive those. Otherwise, all appraisals will go, if you're printing them, will go to our clerk of council. Again, I am so happy to serve with each of you, and I am thankful for every perspective represented here tonight, and we are moving forward. Good night.